Call the. Okay. We call the Bowling Green, Warren County Planning Commission into order for March the 3rd, 2020. And Monica, if you would call the roll, please.
Sir, Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
You have the minutes of our February 17, 2020, meeting in your pocket. Are there any questions? I'll call for a motion.
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Stand.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Hamp?
Mr. Warren, I request that you order the record to include all relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and the qualifications for each of these witnesses. Finally, I request that you administer to them the oath.
Swear to tell the truth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. In our packets, you have the subdivision site development plans. Are there any questions, commissioners? They will stand as been submitted. Is there any old business, Ben? We have none. We will begin our public hearing, and you see on the screen tonight, for those that are in the audience, we will have a staff presentation on each of the four items that are presented tonight. Then the applicants that are requesting these changes, or what they're asking for, will have 15 minutes. And then if there's a representative in the audience that has opposition, or anybody can make a presentation. But if it's an individual, we will limit it to three minutes. And it's not respectful of anybody's opinion, but we will limit those to three minutes. And then the applicant, and their, the applicants, and their, or anybody that's in opposition has a three-minute time to close their argument. So is that okay for everybody to understand that? Thank you very much. Our first item tonight is item number 2022, 11Z County, Rich Pond Grove LLC, care of Leslie Carter, have filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately 2.748 acres located at zero and 184 Rich Pond Road, approximately 163 feet from Nashville Road and abutting Cal Avenue, from RE Residential Estate and General Business to General Business with a general development plan. And, Amy, you got this tonight?
Yeah.
Come on.
Great. We had a pre-application meeting on January 25th for the property that you mentioned, and that is highlighted in yellow. The current zoning is residential estate and general business. The proposed zoning is general business. The proposed land use is commercial, and the future land use is rural village. The applicants are proposing to rezone 2.7484 acres located at zero and 184 Rich Pond Road, from residential estate to general business to general business. The applicants rezone the property at zero Rich Pond Road to general business in 2020, and also received a variance of 10 feet from the required side yard setback of 40 feet when adjacent to a single-family residential zone district or use along the eastern portion of the property. The applicants have now acquired the property at 184 Rich Pond Road. The purpose of this application is to establish the same zoning and development plan conditions for both properties. If the application is approved, the applicants plan to develop the properties with a multi-tenant building as shown on the attached site plan. Right that there? Two of the tenant spaces will be utilized for dental and orthodontic services. The applicants are proposing a third tenant space, however, the use for such space is undetermined at this time. Flipping over to the second page, if you will look under the Site Characteristics Review section, I will just highlight the cultural and historical features. The existing residence located on the property at 184 Rich Pond Road was built in 1927. However, the structure is neither a locally designated historic property, nor is it listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The applicants agreed to afford opportunity to Habitat for Humanity, Restore, and/or other similar nonprofit organizations for any, remove any items which might be reused prior to the demolition of the existing home. Looking on the next page, I will highlight under Design and Compatibility Review, the surrounding land uses. The surrounding area is comprised of single-family residential, commercial, and public uses. South Warren Middle and High Schools are located across from the property. Rich Pond Elementary School is located nearby. There is also some vacant tracts in the general vicinity. Moving down to the Development Plan Conditions, the applicants have submitted the following Development Plan Conditions to help address compatibility with the surrounding area. Number one, all new utilities will be located underground. Number two, the following uses shall be prohibited on the property: bingo parlors, pawn shop, tattoo parlor, adult entertainment, or any sale, rental, or display of pornography or adult books, fueling station or fuel cells, vehicle sales or repair, bar lounge, any alcohol sale, commercial parking, and telecommunications tower. Number three, hours of operation for any non-residential use on the property shall be between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Number four, the property will be developed with a maximum of one entrance onto Kentucky Highway 242, better known as Rich Pond Road. The proposed entrance will be coordinated with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and with the Warren County Public Works Department. No direct access to Cal Avenue will be permitted. Number five, the owner has agreed to set aside space for the development and construction of the greenways trails. Number six, no building located on the property shall exceed two stories in height. Number seven addresses the building materials there. Number eight, block and vinyl will not be allowed as an external facade on any buildings except in soffits. Number nine, lighting on a property will be downlighting, not to exceed 16 feet in height, high intensity discharge, shoebox, luminary type, or wall-packed lighting. Number 10, the property shall be developed with a maximum of one monument-style sign, which will not exceed 10 feet in height, with a total sign-face area of 100 square feet on each sign-face. Any wall signage shall be, shall meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. LED signs shall not be permitted on any building lot. Number 11, any new buildings on the property will be constructed with a front facade oriented toward Rich Pond Road. Number 12, all existing trees located on the perimeter of development, which have a caliper of eight inches or greater, and which are located within 10 feet of the property line, will be maintained during the development and construction on the property. Number 13, any sinkholes detected on site prior to or during construction will be repaired or protected with a sinkhole structure using methods approved by the Warren County Department of Public Works, stormwater management, depending on whether they are located in a proposed drainage area. Finally, number 14, prior to the existing residence on site being demolished, Habitat for Humanity Restore and/or similar nonprofit organizations will be afforded the opportunity to inspect or remove any items that might be reused. Moving down to the Focus 2030 category review, I'll just highlight a few. The planning commission should determine compliance with LU 214 and NCR 116. The applicants committed in DPC number 12 that all existing trees located on the perimeter of development be maintained during development and construction on the property. Staff has noted, however, the majority of the trees are not located within the area described on DPC number 12. Moving on to the next page, the proposal does not comply with NCR 2.5 or NCR 2.5.3, as the applicants plan to demolish the existing historic home, but the applicants did agree to provide the opportunity for nonprofit organizations to reuse any materials prior to demolition. Flipping back to page one, I will look at the points to consider. The proposal complies with majority of the criteria assessed in the review process, with considerations noted regarding the existing historic residence as outlined on page two of this report. So that's all I have for the staff report, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Amy?
We do not know what the, who the third tenant will be. Could you show us on the site plan where that location of that proposed third tenant would be?
Sure. I think, and it might be a better question for the applicant, I'm not sure, there's three, phase there in the front, I'm not sure which, you know, which would be the third. I don't know if they will go down the line, or what the applicants might know exactly where they are looking at putting each tenant.
Okay, we'll consult with the applicant. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you so much. Is the applicant here or their representative? Yes, if you would come to the microphone, please.
If you'd state your name and address, please, sir.
Rodney McGahey, 2053 Die Ford Road, Albaton, Kentucky.
McGahey swear to tell the truth tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. McGahey, the applicant?
So, I see where it says 50% brick, ephistous, and cementitious material, and then, but then I see no block and vinyl. What other, what else do you see on there?
Just to clarify, I'm the engineer, not the applicant. The applicant, Leslie Carter, is here as well, if you need to hear from her. But basically, the majority of this property was rezoned previously, I don't know if you remember or not, for the specific use. They've purchased the additional property on the front now, and to help bring the building and the parking closer to the road to have a better curb appeal. This is what they're proposing to do. I'll have to touch base with her on the facades, as to what additional facade may be used.
Ms. Carter, if you'd come to the microphone, please.
To answer the previous question, they haven't nailed down exactly which portion of the building is going to be used for each tenant. They have an architect, John Williams Associates are working on that now, to designate which areas in the building are going to be used for that.
Thank you.
Leslie, if you'd just tell us your name and address, please.
Leslie Carter, 150 Grand Teton Way.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Volker had a question for you.
What material do you see on the outside?
The current rendering is brick and stone.
Oh, so, so would be okay if we changed that 50% to 100%?
Hmm.
Because if you're saying no vinyl and no block, I'm just trying to figure out what else there might be.
Go for 75, but...
So what other, what could the other 25 be?
Maybe hardy plank, but nothing's been established.
So the hardy is already listed. That's why I'm saying, you've listed everything.
Okay.
It's a confusing topic. So, hardy plank actually is a cementitious material. It's a concrete fiberboard product. And so sometimes applicants aren't, don't know that, and what, what Commissioner Volker is pointing out is, we've eliminated all the possibilities, but now we have a contradiction.
So when you say no vinyl and no block, and the things you, I mean, it's going to be brick, stone?
Okay. Then that's fine.
The reason it's like that, those were...
They're matching up.
Exactly. They were a previous set, and now they're further along in the design process for the building.
I understand. Just changing that would probably just clean that up a little bit.
Okay, that's fine.
Are you okay with that?
Yes, as long as it's fine.
So if we move that to all cementitious materials, you're still going to be able to do some mix of, you could even do manufactured stone if you wanted to.
Absolutely. So just move that to 100%?
Yeah. So, if I may, did you finish that question? I see two structures on the property. Is that correct? There's a home on the property currently, is that right? Or no?
One home on the new portion, existing, and the other, other home has been demoed already.
Okay. And how long before you're planning to get underway here? And I'm leading you just a little bit, and so let me go ahead and disclose where I'm going with this. Do you know what fire department this is?
It's Woodburn.
Woodburn, okay. I had a property recently, and the fire department approached me about training there. And the problem they typically have is if someone volunteers a structure that's going to be demolished, they don't afford them the opportunity to do some training there. And then, and then, of course, the second problem is, we're going to demolish it Thursday, so you've got to be here Tuesday. So, so that's the reason I'm leading you a little bit. Would you be open to allowing the fire department to do training there?
Actually, the initial structure that we demoed, they did training on multiple times.
Ah-huh, okay.
The structure, the second structure that we purchased was previously inhabited by an initial founder of Woodburn Fire Department, and they declined.
So they've already done as much as they want to do?
In honor of him, they would not do it there.
Got it. I see. Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Carter, representing the applicant?
So, if I might just clear up Development Plan Number Seven, Ms. Carter, do I understand that it will now read this way? "The exterior of all buildings on the property shall be constructed of brick, ephistous, stone masonry, or cementitious material."
Correct. More comfortable with that.
Fracking the 50%, correct, Hamp? Yeah. Hang on just a second. Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you all very much for your time. Is there anyone in the audience that has questions or has oppositions to this, opposition to this request? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon a general development plan, docket number 2022, 11Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion approved and goes to the Warren County Fiscal Court. Thank you for your time.
Our next item tonight is 2022, 12Z County, Chatham Builders LLC, care of Alex and Logan Thomas, have filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 28.11 acres located at zero New Cut Road, approximately 3.3, three-ninths of a mile from H.E. Johnson Road from agriculture to RE Residential Estate, with a general development plan. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting on January 27th for the property outlined in yellow on New Cut Road. The current zoning of the property is agriculture, with a current use also of agriculture. The future land use map designation for this property is low-density residential. And, as you mentioned, the request this evening involves roughly 28 acres that the applicants are proposing to rezone in order to subdivide the property into a maximum of 25 single-family residential lots. Looking at the Site Characteristics Review, just point out the proposed layout of the subdivision. You'll see with one entrance on New Cut Road that there are also stub streets proposed to adjacent properties of 10 acres or more. The application does comply with the majority of the items that we assessed in the Site Characteristics Review section, with considerations noted regarding the current electrical capacity and loss of tree canopy. Looking at the Site Design and Compatibility Review on page three, staff found the application to comply with some of the review criteria in this section regarding site design and compatibility. Staff has noted considerations regarding density, home sizes, building materials, front building setbacks, screening requirements for side and rear-facing facades, and proposed open space. On page four, I'll touch on the proposed development plan conditions. Number one limits the development to 25 lots. Number two sets a minimum home size of 1,400 square feet. Number three requires a two-car attached garage. Number four imposes a maximum building height of two stories. Number five outlines building materials for the proposed development. Number six requires utility lines, new utility lines to be located underground. Number seven requires that the developer plant a minimum of two trees per lot. Number eight requires the development to be served by internal streets. Number nine looks at screening of side and rear-facing facades along New Cut Road. Number 10 addresses sinkholes and wetlands. And 11 deals with septic system approval. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, the staff evaluated 18 items. We found eight of those items to be in compliance. There were none out of compliance, but there are 10 that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance, and those are noted in your staff report. Going to jump back to page one and look at the points to consider. First, there is not currently adequate electrical capacity to serve the proposed development. Second, proposed development plan, Condition 7, requires that the developer make all reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees. Let me jump back to the aerial view here. Not existing within building envelopes, areas of utility placement, roadways, or driveways. Roughly seven to eight acres of the property contains mature trees. The proposed building envelopes, utility placement, roadway, and driveway installation will likely impact the majority of the currently wooded area and likely result in loss of tree canopy. The applicants did agree to plant two trees per lot in development plan Condition 7. Looking at the density, the proposed density for this development is 0.89 dwelling units per acre. This exceeds the median density within a quarter of a mile by nearly 15 times, and the average density by over three times, and exceeds the median density within half a mile by nearly 18 times, and the average density by over four times. The fourth point to consider there at the bottom of page one, within a quarter of a mile, fronting New Cut Road or H.E. Johnson Road, home sizes range from 454 square feet to 5,495 square feet, with a median home size of 2,272 square feet, and an average home size of 2,462 square feet. The proposed minimum home size for this development is 1,400 square feet. On page two, we have a couple of other things to note. Within a quarter of a mile, fronting New Cut Road or H.E. Johnson Road, just under 65% of the homes have exteriors comprised of brick, wood, or cementitious siding. The remaining homes are mostly vinyl. A couple of homes have metal exteriors, and under the proposed development plan conditions, there is no limit on the amount of vinyl that can be utilized for the exterior of the newly proposed homes. And then last, the existing homes fronting New Cut Road are oriented to face the roadway. Homes closest to the proposed development on the south side of New Cut Road are setback from the property line, the front property line, at least 180 feet on the east side of the proposed development, and roughly 370 feet to the west. New homes are proposed to face interior streets, and there is no requirement for an increased setback along New Cut Road. The applicants have agreed to screen side or rear-facing facades along New Cut Road with a minimum of six evergreen trees and three deciduous trees per 100 linear feet. I think that is all for the staff points to consider and for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt's report?
Rachel, a question I would ask is, the suggestions that you guys made to the applicants that were not done in this application?
The suggestions that we had communicated initially are on page 28 of your staff report, 28 and 29. And so, they did make some changes, but I guess what is included in our points to consider were not addressed by the applicants.
Ms. Hurt, I have a question. On point number one, there's not enough electrical capacity to serve proposed development. It's one of the first times we've seen this in a while. What does that mean?
So, I guess initially, when we had our pre-application meeting, it was done in conjunction with our Comprehensive Development Review Committee. Those meetings are held every Wednesday morning, and we have representatives from all utility agencies and our sister agencies, Stormwater, Public Works. And so that's kind of a good option for any development, any development before it's, before this body, to kind of get feedback on the front end, to see if there are any issues or hiccups that the developer may face along the way, prior to even going through the rezoning process. And during that meeting, I think it was noted in the pre-application notes, that Warren Rural Electric during that meeting had expressed that they do not currently have the capacity to serve this proposed development. And that upgrades would be needed to the infrastructure before the development could be served.
Did they give you an upgrade?
Mm-mm.
Are they suggesting that they will make those improvements?
Warren Rural Electric? No, that, that it would be up to the developer to provide those upgrades.
And that would have to be done before any building permits were issued?
Correct.
Okay. Did Warren Rural indicate what those proposed developments might be, like improving the substation, or what?
I don't know the specifics, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Ben, do you happen to remember anything extra from that meeting? I think it, they were going to have to bring additional, run additional lines to the property, and maybe through right-of-way and acquire easements.
Typically, that's the things that are done once the use of the land is approved. So if the zone change were to go through, then it would be up to the builders to then get back with the developer, get back with the utility, and see how, what the magnitude is of those developments. But it doesn't mean that the developer hasn't committed to build those, it's just, just an indication that it's not there now and would need to be provided.
Rachel, one last question, if I may. Well, maybe this too. So, assume sewer is not available here, correct? And we have one-acre lots. And, but the density says .89, so is that because of the road infrastructure is calculated into that?
Yeah, so the overall acreage, before you take out the road and everything, we just do it based on the, you know, the pre-development size, and it's around 28 acres, and they're proposing 25 lots. So it's not exactly one dwelling unit per acre, it's a little bit less than that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here or their representative?
Good evening, Chris Davenport, 921 College Street. Swear to tell the truth.
Chris.
Chair Warren, commissioners. Let me, let me first address, if I may, Commissioner Graham's question, because this oftentimes gets confusing, I think, in residential estate developments, where you're really close to one acre. So the .89 means less than one unit per acre. To put another way, each lot has to be more than one acre. So sometimes when we get the reports and it says .89, your thought says, well, it's .89 acres. It's actually the flip of that. It's less than one house per acre, which means every lot has to be more than an acre under RE standards, because it will be served by septic system. My client has asked that I make two revisions, and they speak directly to the questions and some of the statements that were made by Ms. Hurt. On DPC number two, they've asked that I change that to 1,800 square feet. And on DPC number five, they've asked... And on DPC number five, they've asked for a new sentence, which will be the second sentence. It will follow, well, it will just read like this. "Exteriors of all structures will consist of brick, stone, drive-it, vinyl siding, LP smart siding, cement-based siding, man-made stone, or other modern masonry materials." The new sentence will be vinyl siding shall be used in soffits or gables only. So sometimes we get a restriction on vinyl where we say that at least 25% of the home, which basically means the front facade will be vinyl, this goes further than that. This just says the only vinyl is going to be in gables or soffits. The reason they've agreed to do both of those, and Commissioner Volker's question was, what did they not agree to do when they got the initial comments back? We did not change those two restrictions initially. In the meantime, I've spent more time looking and discussing this project with them in the area more in general. Rachel, could you help me pull up? I need to look at the zoning map, but I need it further back than maybe what's on your density map. I'm sorry to...
I think you did a density map.
Yeah, I didn't notice it.
Mr. Davenport, while you're bringing that up on number five, is it your intent to still leave the sentence that neither split-faced blocked?
Correct. Yeah, the third sentence, what is now the third sentence will be the same. We're just putting in a new second sentence. So, could I zoom out farther, though? I've got to go to your website to do that, don't I? I've got a map I can hand around, but it's just one. It'd be easier if we could put it up there. All right. While he's doing that, let me just go over a few that Rachel already touched on. This is a tract just a little over 28 acres. The request is for no more than 25 homes. Again, each lot will be more than an acre. It's got internal streets. I think Ben said exactly what I was going to say about the electrical utility situation. I will tell you, and I can show you on the map, what was explained at the CDR meeting is that this property is kind of in an area where it's at the end of multiple lines. So, I'm not saying that obviously it's got utility there, but the capacity is weakened by the time it gets there. It's stronger almost all the way around. It just happens to be the way the electricity is ran, it's in an area that needs to be upgraded, and obviously that will have to be done before anything's built or permitted. Another thing I want to press upon, obviously this is a non-flume night, so you know this is flume compliant. If you look at the items, the policies that the staff considered, those that are listed as out of compliance all have the asterisks next to them, which means those are all judgment calls for you all. There aren't any policies that the staff mentioned or noted were absolutely out of compliance with the application. This'll work, yeah. So, do we have the pointer? Thanks. So, guys, make sure I'm right, but I believe New Cut Road is... I might have to zoom out a little bit. We're right here, right? Right there, okay. So here's the property, the 28 acres, and what I wanted to point out to you guys is, although what the staff looked at, they looked at within a half-mile radius, okay? Down here are two subdivisions, Cross Creek and Cobblestone, and actually one of the members of RLLC developed those, Mr. Oliver. And I use yours tool today on your website, the corner of our property to the nearest property there is .8 miles. So it's outside the range that the staff looked at, but those developments are all RE lots at an acre or more. There are a handful that are maybe closer to two, but the vast majority of them are at an acre. And so to my point about the increase in 1,800, the closest one is Cross Creek. Many of those homes are at 1,800. It made sense for us to, since that's the closest subdivision I could find, to equate to that. I will tell you, the subdivision down here, those homes are a little bit larger, they're around 2,000, but we think 1,800 is, with the exterior components that we've agreed to, I think is much more in line. I'll also use this map to explain, and I don't know exactly where, but when we had the CDR meeting, what was explained is there's utility lines coming from this direction and from this direction, which explains why we've got so much capacity in this area, but we're in kind of a, in a lull right there. That's why it's going to have to be upgraded. So, really, that's what I wanted to point out for you guys. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Davenport?
Hey, Chris, there's a lot of people here, and I can't help but think that at least one of them is going to come to this microphone and say, this thing's too dense. It's well past the density that the surrounding neighborhoods support, and at least one of them is going to say that the homes are too small. So, tell me your thoughts here.
If we, there are focus, and I, you know, a lot of times when we talk about these density maps, it's not uncommon for me to go outside what staff has presented to you, and that's essentially what I'm doing, Commissioner Graham. If you focus into a half-mile radius, then, you know, that's the complaint they would have. I understand that. I only have to go to eight tenths of a mile to show you a development. This is 28 acres we're talking about. I go eight tenths of a mile, I'm showing you developments considerably larger than that at one-acre lots, at similar home sizes. So those concessions we made tonight were not, wasn't by happenstance. We looked at that situation and said that I believe compatibility is a lot stronger argument if I can look at that development and get in the same range, virtually identical to it in home size and in lot size.
And so with the chair's permission, how about if we do this? I assume the chair is going to recognize some people who may or may not have concerns. If we could double back to Mr. Davenport here after we hear those concerns and see if there are any opportunities to address those concerns, that'd be great.
And at a minimum, I need Mr. Thomas to swear to those two changes, too, at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's have the applicant come up and swear to those changes, and then we'll go to our audience.
Alex Thomas, 3891 Claypool Boys' Road. I swear.
Swear to tell the truth.
Swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas, did you hear the two changes I made? One being that square footage, heating and cooling living space would be at least 1,800 square feet?
Yes.
And that the vinyl would only be allowed in soffits or gables?
Yes.
Do you agree to those?
Yes.
Will you sign those development conditions when I send them to you?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. No other questions for Mr. Davenport. Is there anyone in the audience that has questions or opposition, or do you all have a spokesperson?
Just make sure everybody understands. We're on item number two, okay? Make sure everybody understands.
I didn't know Tim was just looking for somebody to talk.
No.
I may go sit outside.
Christian, we want to give everybody their chance, okay? So there's no opposition to this request. So hearing that, I would call for a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with conditions upon a general development plan, document number 202212Z County. Based upon testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests of motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bytally?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved and will go to Warren County Fiscal Court. Our next item tonight is 202213Z County Thomassar Hunt Investment Properties LLC, care of Thomassar Hunt, Talbot Place Incorporated, care of Thomassar Hunt, L&amp;B Gerard, and Southside Development LLC, care of Barrett Hammer, have filed an application to rezonate tracts of land containing approximately 127.17 acres located at Zero and 844 Aaron Road, Zero Dismen Stone Road, and Zero Rich Pond Rockfield Road, approximately .27 tenths of a mile from White Ash Street, from agriculture and RE residential state to RS1C single-family residential with a general development plan. Ms. Hertz?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting on January 12th. For the properties you just described, there are multiple tracts involved with this request outlined in yellow. The current zoning of the properties is ag and RE with a current use of agriculture and vacant. The future land use designation for the properties is low-density residential. And we will look at our site characteristics review on page two and the proposed layout for the subdivision. The proposal is a request for RS1C. The staff did find that the application complies with the majority of the items in the site characteristics review with considerations noted regarding preservation of the existing tree canopy. Looking at the surrounding density, we've provided a density map of the surrounding neighborhoods for your reference. The existing and approved densities for residential developments in the vicinity range from 0.10 dwelling units per acre to 3.70 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for this development is 3.37 dwelling units per acre. Jumping on to the next page, on page three, we'll look just at the bottom. The staff did find that the application complies with the majority of the items relating to site design with considerations noted regarding proposed open space, and the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. Touching on the traffic impact study requirements, the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and the Warren County Public Works Department reviewed this proposal, and they did not require a traffic impact study. However, they did require a few improvements if this proposal moves forward. The first, from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, they have required that a right turn lane be installed on Kentucky 242 at the entrance to the development, so that would be down here in this location. And such turn lanes shall be installed in coordination with and as approved by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. The requirement from Warren County Public Works is that the entrance to the development on Rich Pond Rockfield Road shall line up with the entrance to South Glen Gables. If we jump back to the map here, you can see this RS1A zone property, it's not quite developed yet, but eventually South Glen Gables will have an entrance that comes out on Rich Pond Rockfield Road, and so Warren County Public Works is requiring that that entrance align with the one from South Glen Gables. The entrance shall be boulevard style, and a dedicated right and left turn lane shall be installed at the entrance to the development onto Rich Pond Rockfield Road. And the applicants did agree to these requirements in their development plan conditions. Looking at the development plan conditions, number one requires that all utility lines, all service utility lines be located underground. Two limits the maximum number of lots to 429. Three outlines the building materials for the proposed Toms. Four requires membership with the HOA, Homeowners Association. Number five requires uniform street lighting. Six requires that the property be served by internal streets and outlines requirements for stub street connections to adjacent properties. Seven requires sidewalks on both sides of interior streets. Eight states that no access shall be permitted to Dismen Stone Road, Aaron Road, or Rich Pond Rockfield Road, no direct access. Number nine, it's not easy to summarize, so I'm just going to read it. Lots adjacent to Rich Pond Rockfield Road, or any part of which is within 75 feet of Rich Pond Rockfield Road, having homes with side or rear-facing facades oriented toward or otherwise visible from Rich Pond Rockfield Road, and homes with side or rear-facing facades oriented toward Aaron Road, shall be screened from such road with a 10-foot landscape buffer consisting of at least six evergreens and three deciduous trees per 100 linear feet. Number 10 requires that fire hydrants be located and spaced in coordination with the Woodburn Volunteer Fire Department. 11 addresses sinkholes. 12 outlines those transportation improvements that I just touched on a second ago. 13 looks at open space, and 14 looks at tree preservation. Of the Focus 2030 category review, we evaluated 15 items. We found that six of those items are in compliance, zero were out of compliance, and nine are up to the planning commission to evaluate for compliance. Those are noted on page five and six of your report. With that, I'll jump back to page one and go over a couple of points to consider. Number one, each lot will be required to contain a minimum of 30% open space. The proposed development will include a community area, including a pool and sidewalks on both sides of the streets. The planning commission should determine if this is adequate, usable, and of scenic or ecological value. And then second, there are mature trees, and these are easier viewed on the aerial here, located around the perimeter of a majority of the development. There is also a two-and-a-half acre wooded area in the central portion of the development area. Staff suggested that the applicants define an area of trees to be preserved, for example, a minimum buffer width around the perimeter with a minimum tree caliper and/or establishing a minimum tree planting requirement for new lots in the development. The applicants agreed in their development plan conditions that the perimeter property line, excluding the property line between the Gerard property and the Hunt-Talbot Place property, which is essentially this tree line running through the middle of the development area here, shall be developed with a five-foot buffer in which mature, healthy trees having a caliper of six inches or more shall be preserved. Each residential lot shall be developed with at least one new hardwood tree with at least a two-inch caliper, and the planning commission should determine if this sufficiently addresses the comprehensive plan. I think that is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hertz. Commissioners, any questions for Rachel?
Rachel, do you know the minnowed square footage for South Glen Gables?
I do. I believe it's 1,800, but let's double-check. It should be in your staff report. Yes, 1,800.
So it looks like there's one other subdivision with a similar or exceeding density. Is that correct? Am I looking at that? The...
Yeah, we can go back to the density map here.
I think it's called South Oaks.
Yes, South Oaks has a density of 3.7.
Graham. Commissioners, any other questions for Rachel? Thank you very much, Rachel.
Thank you, sir.
Is the applicant and/or their representative here tonight?
Chair Kevin Brooks, I represent the applicant. And the applicant, swear to tell the truth, the applicant is here, Barrett Hammer, and is available to talk to you if you need to hear from him. The engineers are here who have done this. I think what I might want to do is just point out two or three things about this and then see what questions you may have of us. So, this is a development, you've already heard most of this, but just to sort of hit the high spots, this is a development where the staff found no policies out of compliance. We are, of course, compliant with the flume. We are a little less dense than the newest subdivision out there, more dense than the other ones, but the newest one out there, right up the street, is actually a little denser than we are. We have committed to all of the road improvements that the county wanted, and we've committed to all the road improvements that the state asked for. We have, I believe, complied with or reacted as positively as we could, I think complied with all of the suggestions that the staff had in their comments back to us. And I'm pleased to be here representing a developer who has always done what he said he would do for you folks. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions you've got. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions you've got.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Brooks, representing the applicant?
I think just something that's going to come up, Kevin, is would you guys consider raising the minimum square footage on the houses?
Well, it's not my money, so I probably should talk to my client about that. I want to be honest, I don't...
And you don't have to give us an answer right now. I'm sure it's coming up, so I'm...
I want to be honest, too, I don't think there is a ton of wiggle room, just as a practical matter. So we feel like, actually, maybe the most important thing I should have said earlier, that we really do feel like that this is a development that is just right in the middle of what is a really pressing need in our community, including house size. All right.
And so Kevin, is that house size is typically, that decision is made based on affordability, I suspect, correct? You guys are trying to make an attractive product at the most affordable price point?
That's correct. It's the market that's telling us that.
Okay. And...
I mean, a developer makes more money on bigger houses, but the market, this is what we think the market says to us. And I think I'm right, Rachel, is the house size in South Oaks is the same?
So South Oaks is 14, South Glen is 18, correct? And so you make a great point, the developer does make more money on larger homes. There's nothing to prevent people from building larger homes here. It is, but typically the concern is at that minimum. So I think it would be appropriate for us to hear from the audience, and then we can circle back and have this conversation.
Just one other editorial comment, just sort of an opinion, but I think we've all observed this, that the, rather consistently, the average house size in a subdivision is above the minimum, and some of them well above the minimum. It's just the minimum.
Correct. And I think I would agree with that as well.
Any other questions for Mr. Brooks before he sits down?
Thank you, Kevin. Is there anyone in the audience, if we'll have a show of hands, that has a question or opposition to this request? Okay. Thank you very much. Do you all have a spokesperson? Just if there's one spokesperson, or we're glad to hear from anybody. And so if there's not one spokesperson, if anybody would like to approach the microphone? Yes, sir?
Yes, sir, if you'd state your name and address, please.
Ricky Woodcock, 394 Dillard Road.
Swear to tell the truth?
Swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, sir.
I'm here with my father-in-law, Alfred Driver. He lives at 263 Desmond Stone Road, which is the corner. His main concern, Desmond Stone is a dead-end road, one way in, one way out, one-lane road. He has been approached by several realtors wanting to buy his property, but he's 86 years old, he wants to stay where he's at until he dies. Is this development going to affect Desmond Stone Road any?
I believe Ms. Hurt could answer it, because I don't believe there's any connection streets to...
That's correct. If you're asking about access, or if there would be any traffic on that road, there's no access permitted under the...
There's no plans of widening it or putting it into the subdivision.
That's correct. There's no access planned. It's not permitted under their conditions that they're proposing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else in the audience have a comment or a question? Yes, ma'am.
Name is Catherine Fletcher, 438 Aaron Road.
Swear to tell the truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher.
I first have a question. In the proposal, just to clarify, there's no direct access to Aaron Road. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm going to leave that portion out. I have something prepared, if I can read it, please.
Sorry, may I just clarify that? So direct access, meaning that no individual lot would have its own driveway on Aaron Road. There is a proposed access point, if, do we have the pointer? In the top-left corner, there is a proposed access to the road with a new internal street.
So the road, so residents would be able to drive from Aaron Road to the new development?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So is it okay if I read from this?
Ma'am, you have two minutes.
The goal of this meeting tonight is to determine if the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding areas. I would like to look at all of the areas adjacent to the property. All of those have a density of less than one house per acre. South Glen Gables, which is across the road on 242, has a house density, or acre density of two houses per acre. This development that's being proposed here tonight has a density of 3.37 houses per acre. This significantly changes the real setting that is unique to our community and does not adhere to the characteristics of the already existing properties. A second item that I would like to discuss is the traffic impact study, according to the proposal and the Focus 2030 comprehensive plan. I know that there's exceptions, as long as there are consultations between the applicant and the agencies. It appears that those consultations took place for the threshold of 242. The plan does not disclose a consultation regarding the threshold of Aaron Road. Our community members have concerns regarding the increase of traffic on this rural county road. I am concerned that the traffic will increase in the Cool Springs subdivision as well, as this will serve as a cut-through road to connect Murphy Road with the residents of the new development. I would also like to consider the increase of traffic on Nashville Road. We know that there's a lot of development taking place, and I think I can speak for everyone in this room that it is a nightmare to drive on Scottsville Road into Campbell Lane, and we will also see those same frustrations if we continue to develop 429 acres and a density of 3.37 on agricultural land in the South Warren District. With these concerns, along with the Bowling Green Housing Needs Assessment as completed by the Bowen National Research, there is only a moderate need for homes within the South Warren community. Considering the amount of development that's previously been completed, along with the projects currently in development, our community would like to make the following recommendations. First, we would like to not see any development take place and preserve agriculture, but these are also recommendations. The first being the number of houses per acre, we would like to recommend matching the current properties of one house per acre for all the adjacent, to match the adjacent. So we would like to decrease the proposal by two-thirds, that's 127 houses remaining. This will allow our community to keep the unique qualities that make our rural South Warren District so special. The second recommendation would be to close direct access of the development to Aaron Road. This will allow our current homeowners the opportunity to feel safe with the amount of traffic that we've already been accustomed to. This will also allow our children to continue meeting with friends and playing outside without the safety, without the concerns of added traffic. This is our opportunity as a community to use, to plan future land use that best fits our community needs. Smart, sustainable growth is important and should always look at community needs over business transactions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher.
So we're not redundant tonight. We've heard about Dismon Stone Road, the density of the proposed development, traffic onto Aaron Road, and traffic onto Rich Pond Rockfield Road, and then the cut-through compatibility, and then the cut-through to Cool Springs. So does anybody else have a, we're not limiting anybody, we'd like, but any other comments that are different than those? Yes, ma'am?
Dean, I think it's also important, we know that we do not have the ability to close off roads. Right.
I was going to add that, so before you begin, if I may, and I don't speak for the developer, but I can assure you, if we offer, if we ask the developer to close that road, he'd be more than happy to do that, but I don't think that's an option that's on the table here for us. Is that correct?
Well, I was...
Sir, it's a dead end.
I was going to...
Connection.
Well, what I was going to mention is that during the Comprehensive Development Review Committee, which this proposal was at that meeting, similar to what we were talking about with the last proposal, the Warren County Public Works Director, he did review Aaron Road and access to Aaron Road based on this concept, and there were no improvements or suggestions regarding Aaron Road. The only requirements that were imposed by the Warren County Public Works Department were at the entrance, as outlined in the staff report.
So before we begin here, could I clarify? Is the reason for the access to Aaron Road, is it safety for, like, emergency vehicles? Or is that why?
Or an ambulance?
Yeah, multiple ways in and out are safer, less miles traveled on the road for school buses, you know, trash trucks, all of that.
And so just one last point of clarification, as Commissioner Volker pointed out, we do or do not have the ability to close access to a road from a subdivision?
Wait, no, no, this body does not have the ability to prohibit access to the road. And in fact, I would point out that the comprehensive plan strongly encourages connectivity and connections to adjacent roadways. And so this meets that aspect of the comprehensive plan.
And so to translate that for everyone in the audience, just to make sure everyone understands, this comes up every third Thursday, almost, because there is a requirement in the comprehensive plan for what is called connectivity. And the reason for that connectivity, most of us view that from our own perspective, that we view it from how are we going to drive and who's going to be cutting through my, the front of my house? Where's traffic, how's traffic going to affect me? The comprehensive plan looks at it differently. They look at how quickly can we get ambulance response? How quickly can we get fire trucks? How quickly can we get in and out of that subdivision if we need to get in and out of that subdivision? So there is a requirement in the comprehensive plan for connectivity, and this body does not have the latitude to stop that connectivity. So I hope that's clear for everyone and makes sense. I'm sorry to interrupt your time.
Yes, ma'am. Your name, please?
Erin Lockwood. It's A-A-R-O-N, it's spelled like a boy.
Okay. And your address, please?
I'm sorry?
Your address?
762 Emmer Lane.
Yes, ma'am, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you.
Yes, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard when developments are supposed to be made, I was under the impression that a traffic input study was supposed to be had. My question is, if you've ever been on 242 or Aaron Road, why was there not a traffic input study? That's one of my questions.
The highways department determination.
I can answer that. In the ordinance and in the staff report, we have that referenced. So it's either required, or if the transportation agencies who have reviewed this proposal can already anticipate what the required improvements would be if a study was conducted and the developer is willing to agree to those improvements. In this case, it was the right turn lane into the development on 242, and I think the other requirement from the Public Works Department to align the entrance with South Glen Gables and establish a dedicated right internal lane out of the development. Since the developer agreed to do those things, a traffic impact study was not required by the transportation agencies. So they have fulfilled that requirement.
My second question is, it's been brought to our understanding that there's no water-retention ponds in this subdivision. Therefore flooding is a question to all of us, especially that in our current neighborhood of Autumn Grove, and the builder that is going to be building this neighborhood has not fixed the flooding in our neighborhood. So we already have flooding issues. We have a white house that's off of Aaron Road that floods into our neighbor's house already. Things were supposed to be proposed and fixed, but yet they were never, so those things were not fulfilled. We also have in our neighborhood where ponds are down at our house, just because of the way that the rocks and things were flowed down and really not taken care of. So we really don't want to add more flooding to our neighborhood of things that we already have. And the third thing, this is not a question, I just want to state this, one person in 2019 and 2020 made a difference in our safety and with the transportation that was in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood in Autumn Grove, if you're not aware, we're pretty much traumatized. One person brought illegal substances, brought illegal things into our neighborhood and put all of our, like, on Aaron Road, in Seattle Slough, in jeopardy, in danger. 400-something houses plus known what's going to happen, dead end at the end of there, and then the dead end in Autumn Grove does raise questions of safety and concern. I know there's nothing that can be done, but I just want to make that be noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. So to answer the question, and maybe the engineers here for this project, in any development, the developer has to retain all the water. And we don't know, to answer this lady's question, why the other one didn't, but they have to design a plan, Lucas, to retain all the water in this development. It cannot go on anybody else's property. So thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that has a comment? We've talked about water retention and all the other matters. We want to be open to anybody that has anything else to say? Yes, sir?
I have one more question.
Again? No. Okay.
You're talking 400 houses. Everybody's coming out of this subdivision and going to the stoplight in front of South Warren. They're going to make a left and go toward Bowling Green. Right now, in the mornings and the afternoons, you cannot turn left and go toward Bowling Green. Would there be a proposal of widening 242 at that intersection and making a left-hand turn lane?
Probably a question for staff.
So contract was let last fall by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet to widen Nashville Road with intersection improvements. I don't know the specifics of that or at this intersection, but that will continue. That should be starting anytime, honestly, I believe.
They're working on it now.
They're working on it now, okay. And that will extend out just past Buchanan Park, and that will be completed within, it's starting now. And then there's another improvements that will be made on the other end of Rich Pond Road going to Rich Pond Elementary, which should help alleviate some of, a lot of that congestion. So, you know, will it be enough? I guess we'll see, but there are improvements.
Well, like the first lady stated, you know, 400 houses, we're going to say two cars per houses. That's every morning and every afternoon. It's just, it's very difficult now to come out 242 and make a left-hand turn onto Nashville Road, even with the traffic light there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. So we've heard all the comments, is there anybody that has anything different they would like to comment on? Yes, sir. Yes, sir, your name and address?
Greg Kitchens, 1038 Aaron Road.
Swear to tell the truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen.
I can't be redundant about the water and stuff. Sometimes it takes me over, about twice a year, it's two weeks maybe getting down Aaron Road where it already floods. All that water does come from Gerard's and the Hunt Farm, and like she said, there's no items of retention. But the other thing I wanted to note, where it comes out on Aaron Road, when they built Autumn Grove, they had to widen Aaron Road up, and they only widened it to the entrance of Autumn Grove. They did not widen the rest of Aaron Road. And I can't tell by the drawing where the entrance to Aaron Road's going to be from that subdivision, and I'd like to request the road be at least widened down to that point, if that could be arranged. And of course, they did just resurface the road, and I know that's not going to be something they're going to want to do again, but it needs to be done correctly this time. When they did Autumn Grove, they just poured two inches of blacktop on the ground, basically, and so I would like to see that addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
With the chair's permission, this retention and drainage thing has come up twice, and there may be some confusion here with regard to what you see and what you will see once the development is completed. I see Mr. Slavy in the audience here. At this stage, the developer does not include retention on the plan because engineering for retention has not yet been done. But if the developer moves past this stage, then they will, of course, have to do a drainage study, and that, the engineers control where... And that, the engineers control where that water goes. And so would it be helpful to have Mr. Slavy come up and state?
That'd be fine.
So Lucas, would you come up for a moment? Let's ask you a couple of questions.
Lucas Slavy, ten fifteen Chaveling. I swear to tell the truth. Thank you, Lucas.
So Lucas, is, is it accurate that, let's start with the obvious, this plan currently does not contain retention, correct?
It is correct.
All right. And so if you were to move past this stage tonight, would you be subject to retention going forward?
By law, we would have to do that, yes.
And so by law, you are going to have to retain the water that hits this, this development. When I say retain, there are rules that even say how fast the runoff can come off of this. And so people much smarter than myself know how to calculate that, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And, and so, so is it your testimony here tonight that if this development moves past this stage, then it would be subject to all the things that we just discussed?
Sir?
All right. Thank you.
Absolutely true. Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that has a question or a comment? Yes, ma'am. Something different? Well, we've already heard. Yes, ma'am.
If it's something different. My name is Rachel Vaughn. I swear to tell the truth.
Where do you live at, Ms. Vaughn?
Five seven zero Aaron Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. My husband Jason and I moved to Aaron Road so our kids could have safety, a safe place to play. We have three kids. We have Eli, who's twelve, Farrah, who's ten, and Leila, who's five. Their safety has been challenged by adding Autumn Grove because of the additional drive-through traffic in our neighborhood. And I have to say that I'm proud of our community. I support growth. We love what it brings our community, but we want to make sure that we're doing it safely and responsibly. Like I said, Aaron is already a cut-through road. And when you have a bus that drives down the road, you literally have to pull off the road. It is not safe to have even two SUVs drive side by side. So the cut-through is absolutely a concern. The safety is absolutely a concern. I also do want to point out that we have probably a thousand houses that are being built in this area. And we continue to have a volunteer firefighter, volunteer fire department that's supporting all of these additional houses. And that is a concern for safety as well. If we have a thousand additional cars driving down Aaron, driving down two forty-two in the current situation, it is not safe. So I do think the traffic must be analyzed in order to be responsible for this growth. And again, I'm proud of our community's growth. We do all, again, support that. But we need to make sure that we're able to maintain our current quality of life and, most importantly, taking into consideration the safety of our children. So please consider that when you consider this proposal.
Thank you, ma'am.
If I may make a quick statement, so, so traffic has come up a number of times here. And it will come as no surprise to any of you that none of us sitting here are traffic experts. We do have traffic experts who are dedicated to exactly what we're doing here. Those traffic experts have made recommendations based on this development. All of us are laypeople. We know that sometimes we have a lot of traffic, but I can't tell you anything about how to design traffic. So we do, I, I hope it's at least helpful for each of you to understand that we have, we have people who have gone to school for many, many years that study traffic. And those people are making these recommendations to us. We're certainly hearing your concerns, but we have to weigh that against the traffic experts when we, when we make these decisions. Thanks.
Any other comments tonight? Is something different? Is there something different? Okay. Yes, sir. Your name?
Jason Vaughn, five seventy, Aaron Road. I swear to tell the truth. To go on that with traffic, when did they, when did they do their traffic study? What time of day?
There was no traffic study completed. It was not required by the transportation agencies.
Who said it was not required? I mean, what I'm saying is that they just.
The Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and Warren County Public Works Department.
Did somebody go out there and look?
Yes.
What time did they go?
I don't know.
See, that's the problem is they go in the middle of the day, other than in the morning or in the afternoon, when everybody's going to work, coming home. Okay? That's when it needs to be done, because that's when most of the traffic is. When you've got kids coming home from school, you've got kids playing outside. Okay? And another thing is, when you sit there and you say you've got to have entrance to another, for the road, the other entrance onto Aaron Road, when you say for ambulances, fire trucks, all the fire trucks and all the ambulances are going to pass the main entrance on two forty-two to get to the subdivision. So to me, that's a little suspect, okay? The developer, when he developed Autumn Grove, paid for this much pavement on Aaron Road, okay? It destroyed the rest of Aaron Road, took two to three years. They finally paved it, because like the gentleman said, they only stopped at Autumn Grove. They didn't go all the way to the end of Aaron Road. Aaron Road is a dead-end street, okay? Either the fire department's going to have to get bigger or something, because obviously, I understand there's got to be growth, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all very much for your comments. Are there any other comments tonight? Anything different? We appreciate all of your comments. Commissioners, we call for a vote, please.
I make a motion to approve the Prozony Map Amendment together with and conditions upon a general development plan, document number twenty twenty-two thirteen Z County, based upon a testimony. Document presented in this public hearing to propose zoning map amendment is consistent with adopted Focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance and objective, objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, to propose zoning map amendment is in agreement with adopted comprehensive plan. Further questions? Motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld.
Same.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker. Commissioner Drain. Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved and will go to the Warren County Fiscal Court. Thank you all for being here tonight. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-two fourteen Z County, Paul D. Reels, Jr. We'll wait just a second. Paul D. Reels, Jr. has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately nineteen point four seven acres located at ten fifty-five Glen Lally Road from Ag to RM three townhouse multifamily residential with a general development plan. Zach?
Yes, sir. I'll give everybody just a quick second to shuffle out. All right. We got a pre-app on January twenty-sixth with the property you see here outlined in yellow with the zoning of Ag and the F is for floodplain with a current land use of agriculture and a future land use that is mostly, or, or excuse me, a high-density residential and open space parks and recreation. But there is a small sliver of mixed-use commercial tucked in there as well. And again, the applicants are proposing to rezone that nineteen roughly acres located at ten fifty-five Glen Lally Road from Ag to RM three in order to develop the property with a hundred and seventy multifamily residential units, with again, that large portion still remaining in the floodplain. And the proposed density for this development is eight point seven three acres, but I'll touch on that a bit more in a moment. If you'll flip on over to the second page, you've got your considerations for the various future land use map criteria. Looking on down at the site characteristics review, I'm not going to go over any of these in great detail unless you all like, but I will highlight that the existing residence was constructed in nineteen forty-two. Flipping on over to page three, I will highlight the surrounding density that the, that within a quarter mile, the densities do range from zero to seven point four nine dwelling units per acre. And that the median density is zero point five five dwelling units per acre. Within a half mile, the densities range from zero to sixteen point six two dwelling units per acre with a median density of three point eight seven and an average of four point six dwelling units per acre. And the proposed density is eight point seven three dwelling units per acre. However, there are seven point eight eight plus or minus acres located outside the floodplain. So the calculated density, if you only were looking at the developable area, is going to be twenty-one point five seven dwelling units per acre. And we'll look on down. I think that's all I've got for the site design and compatibility review, but you'll see the considerations for the traffic impact study, starting at the bottom of page three and then moving over onto page four here. A TIS was not required by KYTC in lieu of a right turn lane being constructed on Glen Lally Road into the proposed development. Applicants agree to that in DPC one or I. And then looking on down to the development plan conditions, again, that first condition stating that the property shall have one access point on the Glen Lally Road and developed with improvements onto Glen Lally to accommodate a right turn lane into the property made in coordination with KYTC. DPC number two restricts the number of dwelling units to a hundred and seventy. DPC number three says that the exterior facades of all principal residential structures on the property will consist of brick, stone, ephes, cementitious siding, LP smart siding, or other modern cementitious materials, and that vinyl shall be restricted to soffits, eaves, and trims. And that plain face block and split face block shall not be permitted. Number four limits the stories to two for each structure. Number five deals with uniform lighting throughout the property and light trespass onto other properties. Number six deals with open space, saying that it will have at least thirty percent open space in the development. Number seven deals with tree preservation located within ten feet of the current perimeter property lines, with the exception of the undeveloped, or including or located within the undeveloped floodplain area, except as necessary for the development of the walking trail, which I'll touch on a little bit more in a moment. Number eight deals with sinkhole mitigation. Number nine deals with the utility placement and that it shall be underground. Number ten, that buildings adjacent to Glen Lally Road will be oriented to face Glen Lally Road, and no parking will be allowed between those structures and Glen Lally Road. Number eleven deals with the demolition of the existing residential structure and that the salvageable materials will be, or habitat for humanity will have a restore, will have an opportunity to come salvage those materials from the home. And then lastly, number twelve, the undeveloped wooded area will be developed with a walking trail. Looking on over to the Focus twenty thirty category review, I'm not going to hammer on any of these, except for the one policy you'll note that does not comply. And again, that has to do with the NCR two point five and two point five point three, that the applicant is planning to demolish the existing historic home located on the property. But again, they are giving Habitat Restore the opportunity to salvage those materials. Looking back on to page one, we'll examine our points to consider. The density of the proposed development, again, is that eight point seven three dwelling units per acre with twenty-one point five seven in the developable acre, acreage outside the floodplain. This is an increase in the median density by eight point seven three times in a quarter mile and an increase by two point two six times in half a mile. And the proposed density, or excuse, yeah, the proposed density for the developable area would increase in median density by twenty-one point five seven times within one quarter of a mile and five point five seven times within half a mile. Staff suggested that the applicants consider reducing the proposed density, but they did not address that in their application. And then the second point to consider being the seven structures located on Glen Lally Road between the intersection of Glen Lally and Rhodes Lane and Veterans Memorial are residential or agricultural structures and range in height from one to two stories. There are no multifamily buildings or parking lots along this portion of Glen Lally Road. And that's all I've got for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Zach. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Jones?
Zach, how many parking spots are there?
How many parking spots? That is a good question. I don't know that it's specked out on here, and I'm not good enough at math to reverse engineer it. You've got a hundred and seventy one-bedroom units. Rachel, you know off the top of your head what that math would be?
One point one, isn't it?
Yeah.
Any spots? Zach, maybe I overlooked this, but what is the square footage on the, these homes?
On the, on the multifamily units? They did not list the square footage with that. That'd be a good question for the applicants.
I don't, I don't see it in the report.
Right.
It's the reason I asked. Hey, so I can't remember the term I'm searching for, but early in the Focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan, we had some discussions about land that could be set aside and you could get higher density if you set some land aside. What, what, what's the term I'm looking for here?
Conservation subdivision?
Okay. Is this, is this a candidate for a conservation district or does the floodplain affect that?
It's not large enough in any event. It's got to be at least forty acres, and this is just nineteen.
Okay. And the density is calculated based upon, not, not based upon the tract of land, but based upon the buildable area? Is that correct?
We provide, oh, go ahead.
Yeah. No, we, we calculated it both ways for the staff report. If you look at that proposed density on, in the black box on, at the top of page one, that is for the entire property, that full nineteen acres. But as we call down in the points to consider, that's where we reference the developable area, which is roughly eight acres.
So the nineteen point four, and then it goes down to eight point seven three, when you consider the entire? Am I looking at the right thing there, Zach?
Uh, that'd be eight point seven three is the multiplier of density. If you look on page, what is it? Two? That's where it cites the seven point eight eight plus or minus acres of developable area.
I see it. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Jones? Thank you, Zach. Is the developer or their representative here tonight?
Ted Pardue, ten ten College Street. I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good to see everybody this evening. Again, Ted Pardue, I represent the applicant who is David Reels. Mr. Reels is gentleman. If you'll give us a thumbs up, just so you all know who he is. Just a couple of things. I think Zach did a superb job of kind of lining this proposal out for you all. Recognizing questions in regard to density, Commissioner Graham's question in particular, I would submit to you all, you'll see on the first page of the staff report that the proposed density of this development is eight point seven three dwelling units per acre. I understand there being a delineation between what is developable and what is not, but I would stress upon you all as commissioners to consider the density of the development as it is indicated in bold print on page one, and that is eight point seven three dwelling units per acre. While there is approximately eleven acres or so of this property that lies in the floodplain, that is from my client's perspective, part of the development. And that is, in essence, an amenity, as you will see in our development plan conditions, as we've proposed or committed to constructing a walking trail in that area and preserving all of the healthy trees within that area. As a, as a whole, again, we consider the entire nineteen acres as, as part of the development because those folks, if it's approved and developed as it's proposed, will have access to and enjoy that area as an amenity of the development as a whole. So when you're trying to decipher what's laid out in the staff report as it relates to density, I do, again, want to emphasize that the entirety of the property, even the floodplain area, is part of the development based on the development plan conditions that we've submitted. I think a couple of other points worth mentioning. How do I go back on the slideshow? Okay, here we go. I wanted to emphasize the fact that, let's see here. I wanted to emphasize the fact, let's see here, yeah. So this is unquestionably, undisputably, Flume compliant. You'll see here that what is essentially all of the developable area, according to the future land use map, is designated as high-density residential. There is, as Zach mentioned, a, a small sliver on the south end that is, I think, mixed-use commercial, is that right? Yeah. But as you all are probably familiar with, the definition in the comprehensive plan for a future land use map category of high-density residential is development with at least a density of 12 dwelling units per acre. And again, what is proposed here is considerably below that at 8.73 dwelling units per acre. If one wants to analyze the, the density of this proposed development versus existing land uses that surround, I guess my, I would point out to, to the, to the commission that that red section on the future land use map is the high-density residential designation. You will see that the entirety of, of this, what is essentially this section of, of town or the county stretching and meandering down the creek to the north was designated when the future land use map was created as high-density residential, meaning that for the purpose of future growth and development in this part of town, those who created and envisioned the future land use map planned for the fact that this area would be developed as high-density residential development. And again, what we have proposed here in terms of density at 8.73 dwelling units per acre is actually considerably below what the comprehensive plan envisions as a development in high-density residential. So no matter when development of this area of town materializes, at some point, whether it's Mr. Reels or someone who comes along behind him, the first and second, and the first, I guess the initial folks that attempt to develop are going to have to face the issue of the density of their proposed development being different than what is immediately surrounding it because this area that's in red noted as high-density residential, the development has yet to materialize. So again, I, I want to emphasize the, the future land use map designation. You will see that in the, on the zoning map, as properties in this area are currently zoned, you have not far to the east, you have a section that is zoned RM4. Again, we're proposing for this piece of property that it be zoned RM3. RM4 is that dark red section. You'll see also, not too far to the south, just across Morgantown Road, you have some areas that are zoned and actually in use as RM4 properties. And then that lighter red color is RM3, which you'll see in a considerable portion of, of the area to the right side of the map to the east, which is, again, consistent with what is being proposed here. So I'll go back to, or I guess conclude with the point that we feel as though this is a development that is, has the potential to be very attractive and unique. There is, at least as it stands currently, a lack of new quality multifamily development in this particular area of town. We think that this development would add diversity to housing options in this area. It is buffered to the west by what is essentially all floodplain property. Until you get over to Veterans Memorial, there is a light industrial zone there. That's the Simply Mulch business. And again, we believe it offers an attractive residential option, if approved, with the development as it's laid out and the recreational area, that is, the floodplain area that we're committing to preserve and, and on which we're proposing to construct a, a walking trail. So you'll find in the staff report, there is but one, as Zach mentioned, but one provision that the staff determined this proposal was not in compliance with. That is the section as it pertains to the home that sits on the property. But again, as you will see, there is a development plan condition by which the property owner has committed to donating salvageable material to Habitat for Humanity. Traffic improvements were addressed. We have committed to a right turn lane into the development on Glen Lilly Road. There were no other requirements or suggestions made by the transportation, well, Warren County Public Works. So again, I don't have anything more to add beyond those things. I did just want to point out those issues as it relates to density, but we'll be happy to answer questions as well. I have the engineer, Mr. Slavy, he's still here to answer questions also.
Thank you, Ted. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Pardue?
Ted, I mean, I agree with you. I think it's a good piece of property for multifamily. I just personally think it's too dense. I mean, I understand what you, the argument you're making, but really, we're putting, we're putting 170 units on 7.8 acres. I mean, they're gonna be on top of each other. So.
Want to interrupt you?
No.
And I respect.
And, and I understand, I understand what you're saying about the whole parcel. I, I don't disagree, but the whole parcel is not buildable.
Whole parcel's not, not buildable, but the, but the whole parcel, I guess my position is, is part of the development.
I, I agree with that. I agree with that. I, I just personally think 171 units on 7.8 acres is a lot.
Even at that, that's 20, let's see, what, the density there is 21 dwelling units per acre. And again, this is, as envisioned by the Flume, high-density residential property, which is, you know, property in excess of 12 dwelling units per acre and envisions zones such as RM4, and in this instance, we're only proposing RM3.
Of in 20.
But again, my, I'm, I'm gonna go back.
I mean, I'm just giving you my opinion.
Yes.
I, I, I mean, from my standpoint, I'd like to see it a little less dense. I don't have a problem with the multifamily, but I, I'd like to see it a little less dense.
So Ted, let's go back to the floodplain. If I understand your argument, one of your arguments is that these residents would have access to that floodplain area and that you'd have walking trails there. Is that correct? And so it, it may be, it may be redundant, but no one could build in that floodplain area behind these, these properties, correct? Would it be appropriate to, to, to put that in the, in the development plan conditions? That.
I think that's.
You can't anyway, right?
I think that's as a matter of law, effectively.
Okay. And so I guess this is a, a question for staff. Ted has asserted that, and I, I understand his point, I think. How do we measure the density when the Flume depicts the entire portion? Could go, could be as high as RM4, but none of it's developed yet. So how do we weigh that?
I'll take a stab at that. So that's kind of why the density was calculated both ways, just on the lot versus the entire, the, just on the buildable area versus the entire lot. Because we've kind of heard that, that that's packed in there. So that character that creates, is that compatible with this corridor? So that's ultimately what this body has to decide, is, is weigh all of those things and then, and then make that decision.
So would it be safe for us to assume that this entire corridor, though it isn't developed currently, would all be at least RM3 and possibly RM4?
I, I would say that the comprehensive plan as a guide says that could be possible, but how the market and everything, how it would actually develop, it does not predict that or direct that necessarily.
Okay. So the, let me restate it differently. The, the, the Flume, perhaps predict is not the right word, but the, the Flume sets out, if you will, RM3 for, RM3 to RM4 and invites that, that type of development for this particular area. Would that be accurate?
That would be generally, generally, generally accurate, but likewise, when we have an agricultural area and, you know, typically that's, it's saying that in general, that needs to stay agriculture too, and we change those zones all the time. So it's not a simple, simple black and white answer.
Okay.
Did you have something to add, Ted?
And I'll add to Commissioner Graham. If you look on page two, it's got the category description for high-density residential, and it kind of goes into greater detail about the types of uses that might be appropriate as the Flume sees it, which includes a lot of multifamily, but it also includes single family as well. And it outlines a, a density range for you, so that's something you could consider.
So point that out to me, Zach. You said it's on page two, is that right?
Yes, towards the top of page two, right there.
Got it, okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioners, any other questions, Mr. Pardue?
Mr. Pardue, what, what is the average size of these multifamily, family units? Square footage?
I'm, I'm not aware of that, Commissioner Starks. I was asking the engineer, Mr. Slavy. He's not certain either. These are structures that will have four, as proposed, four one-unit apartments per building. And I don't profess to be an expert enough to even give you an estimate on what the square footage of those would be. Four on each story, sorry, two stories, stand corrected, thank you, Commissioner. Eight per building, four on each, on each floor, two stories.
Ted, would you at least have the conversation with your client to see if there's any, any latitude here with regard to density before we, and then could we, could we hear from you at the end, after we've heard from the, from the audience members?
Be happy to do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a comment or a question regarding this zoning change? Oh, yes, yes, ma'am, come on up here. Yes, ma'am, your name and address?
My name is Tammy Willis Adams. I live at 956 Glen Lilly Road, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
I will be as fast as I can. My husband and I, Jeffrey Adams, have lived on Glen Lilly Road at 956 for 22 years. There's not a lot of people here in opposition tonight because there's not a lot of houses on that road. There are five of us, and here's three of us. They're, these, three of them are old homes. Each have a significant amount of land with them. Our house was built in 1860. We have land, we take a lot of pride in our property and taking care of it, as do our neighbors. You know, we're describing this county road that's less than a mile long, running from Rhodes Lane to 880, and the property requesting a zoning change is right in the middle of it. An apartment complex, as we've just been talking about, 21 big buildings, 170 apartments, is just not compatible with this existing area. None of us chose and purchased our lands expecting a huge apartment complex to be right in the middle of it. I just want to make a few quick points about why we really oppose this. First is involves accidents on that road. This is a very curvy county road, there's already a high rate of accidents. We tried to think back, we came up with at least seven accidents since the fall that had EMS and law enforcement respond to them. All of these accidents happened in the road in front of this property requesting the zoning change, right in front of it, right in the middle. I know we missed a lot of other accidents simply because we didn't know about them or they were able to avoid law enforcement, which does happen often. When you add an additional, whatever, 200 cars, I don't know the parking numbers, but coming and going every day from the same point of entry, I know that, that accident rate is gonna go up. Another quick point has to do with the flooding of Jennings Creek. We just talked about the floodplain. The water rises quick, and it's over the road in front of this area in no time. Last summer, we saw two cars with just the tops showing. Rescue workers were out there checking on them because, I mean, you could just see the tops of the cars. Sign is up, but the, the water rises fast and people just drive into it before they know it. Another point quickly has to do with the Old Mill on Jennings Creek. I'm sure very few people are aware of this, but history people know about it. Jennings Creek, of course, runs behind this property, and right where the apartment complex is planned, the remnants of the 1840 Griss Mill is still there. It's a testament to its construction and it's a masterpiece of Warren County history, but it is a danger zone. I don't, if you've ever seen it, you know what I'm talking about, but it, it, a lot of it is still there, just like it was. The wheel washed away in a flood, but, I mean, it is dangerous. If it's discovered, it's not a place children should ever, ever be unless they're very closely supervised. It's just, it is a safety issue. Water pools in that creek, deep at that point where it's dammed, and the proximity of it to the proposed apartment complex is scary. Another quick point has to do with the fishing area on Jennings Creek. About two tenths of a mile from 880, there is a bridge over Jennings Creek. And the Kentucky Department of Fish and Wildlife stocked trout at this bridge. Jeffrey and I have provided parking to the public and access to the creek for over 20 years so that the trout could be stocked and the public could go there. We're not compensated in any way for doing this. We do it because it's good for the community, it's a benefit for the community. It's extremely popular, it's close to town, it's, of course, beautiful scenery. It's been recreation to a lot of people in Warren County. If this development proceeds, we will have to terminate the agreement we've had for over 20 years with Fish and Wildlife, simply because it creates too much of a safety concern. This is a busy place at the fishing area. People come, they fish from the bridge, there's kids on bikes there all summer. Children are there, we've got people bringing kayaks. There's just a lot of cars there at any one time. The increase in traffic is just, it's too great a concern, we just, we can't be a part of it. If my time is up, I will quit, and Jeffrey will continue.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Adams. So you're, but thank you for your.
I will stop now, thank you.
For your comments, and we've talked about the traffic, the.
Yes, sir, we will, we'll do our best not to duplicate.
Well, and the, the developer, if this project was approved, does have to take care of the water on their own project. It cannot be pushed on somebody else.
Oh, I'm, I, yeah, well, I know, it's not controllable from the creek, I realize that, I'm not.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Mr. Adams, your name?
Jeff Adams, I live at 956 Glen Lilly Road.
Swear to tell the truth.
Uh, I, I, yes, yeah, as I do. Thank you, Mr. Adams. I sure wish we had a lawyer to, to, to talk for us, but we don't. The density of 8.73 dwelling units per acre includes the entire tract of land. It's functionally 28 dwelling units per acre when you exclude the floodplain. That's just too much. It's, it's way, way too much. This means, that means the proposed density for the usable area would result in an increase in median density by 21.57 times within a quarter of a mile. That's way, way too much. This does not represent a balance of land use. It was stated that there are few known sinkholes on the property. We have had sinkholes happen on our place, a lot. Seems like every time you go out on the tractor, you find another sinkhole. And it's, 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 it's way, way too much. We've had two huge sinkholes in our yard. They developed in a matter of days and just kept increasing in size. We had to. in size. We had to have Scott and Ritter come in and dig on, you know, do what they do to repair the sinkholes that we had in our yard. So I'm, there has to be sinkholes at this place. There has to be. We have new ones right now. Before we start mowing hay, we will have to look for more because you could easily turn a tractor over, real easy. As to the vacant tracts of land that were mentioned, we could only see one. I don't know what the tracts of land are talked about, but other tracts of land that might appear vacant are actually farmland. And it's like, we use our land to, as hay, all the time. They are not vacant tracts of land. In closing, I'm not opposed to zoning changes when they are appropriate, positive, and not a detriment to the area. This is not a good place for 170 apartments on a curvy county road with residences. It should remain agricultural.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Mr. and Mrs. Adams, if I, I know you're not represented by an attorney, but if I may, could I ask you a question? What would be an acceptable density here?
I wish the whole thing would go away, period, case closed, but I don't know.
So how do, as commissioners, how do we weigh that against a future land use map that says this is RM three and everyone, that is high-density residential, and everyone who looks at property...
I don't know how to weigh it.
You want to talk, Charlotte? Okay, thank you, Mr. Adams. Yes, ma'am, if you'll, if you have a different comment and...
I do.
Okay, all right.
Charlotte Elder, 856 Glen Lilly Road.
Swear to tell the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Part of what I was going to say was, Sky Properties owns a ton of apartments right across Veterans', and many of them are still vacant. So I totally understand. I understand the maps. This is not above my comprehension. But when apartments are sitting empty that are not full, and yet we want to progressively take this piece of land and put far too many apartments on a small plot of land, and then we want to build a walking trail where, with a small amount of rain, floods. I understand this land. I drive it probably five or six times a day. And where they want to put this proposed walking trail, floods all the time. So the apartments are not in the, on the, that's great. It's a great idea. It's a great concept. But where the proposed walking trail is, at least what I can tell from the map that I've seen, floods tiniest bit of land, tiniest bit of rain. So it's a great concept, and it sounds wonderful on paper, but I drive it every day. I have pulled myself and my ex-husband, car after car, out of that turn. A lot of them don't get reported because they're usually intoxicated. You should see their wall. It's destroyed, week after week, by car hitting it. Sometimes the cops are called, sometimes they're not. Usually, they're not called because they don't have insurance. And so they spend thousands of dollars replacing their own rock wall because a car hits it, because it goes like this, and nobody ever sees it. There's no lights. So the turn lane is a great concept. I understand it, too. Not above my head. I understand it solves a problem, but it doesn't solve the other problems of the heavy traffic on a very curvy road in the dark that dips down and curves, has a deep crevice on the other side, and goes into a stone wall. Yeah, so that part I did want to address, because there are apartments that are vacant, all close to the area, not on that road, not on our road, but just around, just around that area, as well as, because I actually called in preparation for this meeting. I called to see if there were apartment complexes available, as well as some behind Sky TCS.
So one of the things we consider here isn't whether or not there is available housing. It is the right of the property owner to develop his or her property and in the way that they see most economically viable. So we couldn't address whether there are or are not vacant properties somewhere in the area. The question I was asking the Adams is, what is acceptable? And so we've heard that you don't feel this density is acceptable, but what is acceptable?
Sure. And I understand that as well. I don't see apartments on that road as wise. I don't see it wise. We were talking with the last proposal with fire and, you know, emergency vehicles and things like that. I mean, they're out there all the time. I called the other day because there was an electric line. I hit it with my car hanging down. It took 26 minutes for, and the sheriff and the city were fighting. I had to call both of them because I'm on the city-county line. They were fighting over who was going to come. 26 minutes later, cars kept hitting it.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Ms. Elder, your three minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
My answer would be like two or three houses.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that has a comment that's not been addressed? Yes, ma'am. Could you make it real quick? Come up to the microphone, please.
On the pre-application conference, the first section was surrounding density, and I saw a quote that said, "There are some moderate and higher-density multifamily residential uses also present in the area." And I don't know if this is an, I don't know what that's referring to.
To the east, when you get further to the east.
Oh, I thought we were just concerned about the county area of the rural, okay.
It was, it's more of a broad description. So if you're looking at the zoning map or the land use map, it would be the homes that are further to the eastern view on the street.
That answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Pardue, I think you've heard the comments tonight for your applicant regarding density, traffic. Do you have something your client would like, or the applicant...
Do, Chairman, and I've spoken with Mr. Reels about the issues and concerns of density, which were well taken. And they are, he is willing to reduce the number of total dwelling units from 170 to 140, which would be a reduction of 30 total dwelling units. And I've been on my phone using the calculator over there. I've not been texting people, but I'm trying to crunch those numbers. And if I did the math correct, that would bring the density of the total development down from 8.73 dwelling units per acre to 7.2. And then if you're looking at just the developable area, it would reduce that density from 21.57 to 17.7 dwelling units per acre, which I agree is much more in tune with that high-density residential designation, which is in excess of 12. But again, for purposes of creating a record, I do just want to emphasize my original point, and that is that corresponding to the density calculation that the staff made on page one of the report, I would respectfully submit to you all as a commission that the density number is that of the property as a whole, and not just that which is developable, especially given that even the undevelopable portion is part of the development here. But we're willing to make that revision, and I can swear Mr. Reels in to have him verify that when necessary.
Add one other question. In the development plan conditions, I'm assuming there's going to be one management company?
Correct.
Okay, can we make that?
Can.
Okay.
You would, one owner and/or management company?
That's correct. That's correct.
If you would, Ted, if you would bring your client to the... Would you state your name and address, please, sir?
All Reels Jr. and 518 Emmett Avenue, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Swear to tell the truth.
I do.
Thank you. You've heard the two amendments. One is to have a single management company. Do you agree to that?
Yes.
And then, Ted, the number of units goes from 170 to 140?
Single owner, though, too.
Yes.
Single owner as well, right?
And, yes.
Less buildings that are going to be built, or how are you getting to that number with...
Yeah, I was working from density backward, but 30, a reduction of 30 units, if there are eight buildings or eight units, there would be a reduction of three buildings.
In the RM three zone, you're restricted to two stories and eight units per building.
Eight units per building.
Right, so that's going to make it so it will be less buildings.
So how many less buildings? Could we clarify that?
As is proposed, it would be at least three.
Approximately three less.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And I guess reduction in corresponding parking with that.
Mr. Moore, do you have, Mr. Reels, if you'll come back up here just a minute. Do you have those two proposed changes?
Yes. The, we're dealing with development plan condition number two, and the maximum number of dwelling units is to be reduced from 170 to 140, and we would add a sentence to development plan condition number two that recites that the development will be under single ownership and single management.
Reels, are you agreeable to those terms?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Mr. Reels. Thank you, Ted. Any other questions?
I have a question. What is your timeframe on development if this is approved?
I don't have one.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. So you've, we've heard the public hearing, and you've heard the changes to the development plan conditions. Commissioners, would call for a vote, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon our general development plan, document number 202214Z County, based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. Proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan. It's demonstrated by its compliance and objective action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes summary of evidence and testimony, but a witness is at this public hearing.
Sir, second, second.
Mr. Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Oh, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Oh, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Oh, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Oh, ma'am.
There's been a tie vote, four votes in favor, four votes against. Our goal is to make a recommendation, and that recommendation would either be for approval or denial. The Kentucky revised statutes says that you have the option of revoting, and the option of doing that for a period of 30 days. But you have the option of revoting again tonight, if someone wants to put the same motion on the floor or another motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. So can we have discussion? Can we have discussion?
Discussion?
Yes. So I guess my question to the ones who voted no, is it a density issue, or is it the project as a whole?
My reason for no is suitability.
Suitability?
Same.
Okay. Okay.
My position is also along the same lines as Chairman Warren.
So I don't know that we can change compatibility. I mean, if...
No, I think now the question comes to the four of us who voted yes for it. Are any of us willing to change our votes? That's the simplest way.
I'm a bit torn here because the developer has conceded to reduce, yeah, to reduce the density.
Well, I mean, I, mine is, I understand the concerns and everything that were brought up, but, you know, it does fit.
See, the problem is, okay, let's say we vote against this tonight. That, it's not going to change the flume. It's not going to change, it's not going to change what they're facing every time somebody buys a piece of property out there. It says that it's our, it's flume compliant. So what do we do with that?
If it's in compliance, I mean...
We're not going to change the flume.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
So here's, if I had to say it in a nutshell, what I'm trying to do tonight is get the most acceptable development, because these kind of people have come out of here and voiced their concerns. We got to reduce, we got a reduction in the density. Perhaps we could get more reduction, but if I understood them, they were asking for two or three houses to be built there. And with that flume, I don't know that you're ever going to see that.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Thank you, Mr. Volker.
And what really happens, I mean...
You can, I think you're entitled to ask the applicant if he's willing to further reduce the density as a way of addressing the concerns.
I think...
Would that, would that change anyone's vote if they reduce density?
Yes.
It would change a vote if they reduce...
Say compatibility, when I said compatibility, just one person's opinion, is, and I understand the flume, we've been through this many times, but the density in a, the compatibility of the surrounding areas with the road infrastructure is my concern.
So are you suggesting that if the applicant were to reduce, further reduce, sorry, further reduce density, that's something you would reconsider, or would want to reconsider tonight? Okay, so Ted, would you, would you come forward just for a moment? Let's, this is something we don't encounter a lot, but you now see that we have a tie vote. This is not going to go forward unless you can change at least one vote. And you have one commissioner who, at least one commissioner, who could be persuaded by a further reduction in density. Is that a conversation you want to have with your client?
Can.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I catch fair compromise.
So Ted, I'm going to make a suggestion that you guys have to decide if it works for you or it doesn't work for you. I'm going to say that you're going to probably need to get around 100 for it, for it probably to go forward tonight here.
Thank you, Commissioner Volker. Let me discuss that a little more. Sir, Mr. Pardeau?
Yes, Chairman Warren. So I've discussed the concerns with Mr. Reels, and I know that there has been a suggestion of, of 100, I think, I hope, I hope the suggestion was some, something around 100. Mr. Reels is willing to reduce the total number of dwelling units to 104. And the reason what we arrived at 104 is that is a number divisible by eight, with the understanding that an RM3-zoned property would permissibly accommodate buildings containing eight dwelling units apiece. So I can have him approach and swear him in-
He would, he would approach and, and have Mr. Moore put that in the development plan conditions.
Mr. Reels, you've heard your lawyer speak. Is it your agreement that development plan condition number two will now read that property will be developed with a maximum of 104 dwelling units? There shall also be single ownership and single management of development.
Yes, sir.
And that's your agreement?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Reels. Thank you, Ted. Thank you. Yes, sir. All right. So we've heard the new development plan commission-
Warren, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No.
As I recall, there was a motion on the floor that Mr. Gay made and Mr. Volker seconded, but that was a motion that was made and seconded without these reductions. So the question is whether or not there needs to be a new motion or a new amended motion that reflects that latest offer.
I'll make a motion to-
A new amended motion, correct?
amended, yes. New amended motion.
And it is a motion to approve-
To approve, yes.
With the same language that you recited, both in the original motion and the second motion, and now the third motion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gay.
If you could call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Oh, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Oh, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale? Commissioner Volker? Commissioner Drain? Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion is approved, and will go to the Warren County Fiscal Court. Thank you all for being here tonight.
No new business. Couple of things I would like to just mention, though. We've kind of had to put a pause on our conference of plan update process. We're just extremely busy right now. We have a very high volume of applications coming through our office. It's, you know, on record pace again right now. We'll see how the, how it goes as the year goes along. And then added to that, we're trying to focus on those tornado-damaged neighborhoods and get all of that stuff in order. There'll be some, likely be some changes you all be seeing. It'll probably be in that May timeframe before we would get all of that to you as far as the public hearing, but we're working on all the property descriptions and map amendments and need to, we got to go back to the, yeah, go back to the neighborhoods and, and make sure we got, got right what we, what we think we heard from them. Just a quick note with that, Tuesday, this, coming Tuesday evening, we'll be having our, another meeting. This will be with the Whispering Hills neighborhood at Calvary Baptist Church at 5:30, so-
No, that's a lot of work for you guys, but there's a, there's a significant amount of public interest in that, so we appreciate the, the amount of effort and time you're putting into that.
12 cases, six pieces of property.
It's a flume.
Yeah. Yes, okay, so, yes, so seven.
Later that meeting? I won't be here. I'll be in Chattanooga, Tennessee. And thank you and the staff for all you all are doing. Well, who, we, the only people that can vote on that are the ones that were here for the February-
Yeah, we'll get with the applicant then. They might have to, to wait, wait again, and then we may, we see if we've got a quorum otherwise, but we'll, we'll work on that.
Thank you, Ben. Any other discussion items tonight, commissioners? Thank you all for your time, and thank you, staff.
Thank you all for your flexibility and willingness.
It's good for me to know, yeah.